This time I'll call this meeting to order. If we could have roll call.
Mrs. Yalish, here. Darlissa Ritter, here. Tom Minotti.
Here.
Kate Koutas.
Here.
Mandy Kill Martin.
Here.
Jose Goncalves.
Here.
Dave Joello.
Here.
Ann Gatos.
Here.
And Mark Holden.
Present. Okay. If we could please rise. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance and then we'll... Okay. Alrighty. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if we please remain standing for the national anthem.
You now have the pleasure this evening of having a sixth grade student from Perry Hill School, Matt Sahagan, and he's going to play the Star Spangled Banner.
Deborah Keller has stepped forward. Deb Keller is a very talented music educator and she is also the co-coordinator of our music curriculum. And she is going to introduce the children who are going to perform.
Yes. This evening we have arranged a little musical entertainment for you as per request from Dr. Hewitt. And we are now going to bring over members of the Montyville School Choir under the direction of this Ashley Daddo. And we'll be singing a couple of holiday papers.
Christmas, Christmas, time is near. Time for joy and time for cheer. We've been good but weekends last. Hurry, Christmas, hurry fast. Want a plane that loops the loop? Me, I want a hula hoop. We can hardly stand the wait. Please, Christmas, don't be late. Christmas, Christmas, time is near. Time for joy and time for cheer. And you've been good but weekends last. Hurry, Christmas, hurry fast. Want a plane that loops the loop? I still want a hula hoop. We can hardly stand the wait. Please, Christmas, don't be late. We can hardly stand the wait. Please, Christmas, don't be late. Hark, hallel bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Go get away." Christmas is here, great music here, two young and old meet in the pool. Ding dong, ding dong, that is the song with joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they found raising the sun, or hill and dale telling the tale. Hail the ring while people sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On, on they send, on without end, their joyful tone to every home. Hark, hallel bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Go get away." Christmas is here, great music here, two young and old meet in the pool. Ding dong, ding dong, that is the song with joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they found raising the sun, or hill and dale telling the tale. Hail the ring while people sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On, on they send, on without end, their joyful tone to every home. Ding dong, ding dong.
So, parents, thank you so much for coming tonight. It goes without saying, you're always welcome to our board meetings, to our public meetings. But this evening, given the big crowd we have, you may find it easier as you exit the building to go down that set of steps. In fact, Dave, can I ask you to stand and show your order? There's a stairway down there and then you're going back out to the main door. And now we'll avoid some of the crowd. Also, it'll take a few days, but the video of the meeting, including these performances, will be available on YouTube. Good job.
Get the newspaper over to parents. Get the paper, newspaper to take it.
Yes. Correct. Right.
Pregnant people, institute, we're trying to think of the...
Nope. Actually, I think it's here. And after that, January 9th, where we have a conference to elect the 28th and 29th. Yeah, I already had your idea.
Yeah. And then if I was going to do it, I'd use sort of...
Well, yeah, what we decided to do is make it so it's fun when that meeting happens. And the meeting's open anyway. The next big meeting, we have the part where we also saw... Which is gonna be quite interesting, yeah. We have 15 delegates, plus one, because I'm a state central, assuming that I get re-elected as state central. We, I get, I'm a delegate.
Automatic delegate.
Yeah.
So, 15, you said many names on this line, or...
It's usually, the way it's done in the process is, we have a day, we put a 10.
Yeah. I was a delegate for the 19...
Oh, okay, sorry.
I was a delegate for Morrison.
By all means. More entertainment is a fun thing.
And Blumenthal.
Let's get more audience and add a lot.
Bringing the launch ladies.
We'll be behind, and then we also have 15 delegates that elect the state central committee representatives. I am one, and then there's one from Stratford. Stratford has 22 delegates.
And there's another representative there?
Well, there's a male and a female. And I got elected years ago by pulling together Shelton, Monroe, and Seymour. And I ended up winning a lot of votes. And it was 1918, because the two people from Seymour couldn't find the location.
Songs here, that's gonna be the...
That was a closed vote?
Well, the one delegate from Stratford, and the other one, and that was the difference. Otherwise, it would have been 18, the other one. So, but I've got a decent relationship with the people that are in Stratford. And Stephanie Phillips, who lost, she, I assume...
Lost like five, six hundred votes, right?
Yeah, I assume she's ready to get the town chair again. And as soon as she does, then she and I get along well. And I support the road road check and stuff, so I don't think I'm an issue there. Mr. Riz?
Yeah, we're gonna be busy.
Oh, yeah. And then the convention is in Vegas, 18th of May to...
Brazil.
For me and Harper. Yeah, only two days. There's probably a fight in the morning Saturday. That's what it was, so we knew it was going to come. We've already had business from several, several... In fact, this guy is coming in January, even though he's now with...
You want a biscotti?
No, thanks. And there are three or four new people that are jumping in.
Invite all the candidates that we can hear.
Well, if they ask...
Such a portion of tonight's little holiday entertainment. Bring back my saxophone, boys. And again, this is Matt Sahagan, he's a sixth grader at Perry Hill. He's been playing, well, he did it in a couple of months, because he started last year. And this is Ryan Delgado. And Ryan is a fifth grader who has just begun in September. And I'm very, very proud of these guys, they're doing very, very well. And we're excited that they're playing so well now, but when they hit SIS, they'll be out there with Mr. Belai. So, we're going, our first song, Ryan, you wanna be first? Ryan is going to be first, and Ryan is going to play "We Wish You a Merry Christmas." Take it away, Ryan. Excellent. Just to decide, like, there's always a running joke with music people, that you never have, you always have way too many drummers. Well, at Perry Hill this year, we have about 88 musicians, and 26 of them are saxophone. So, it's, there are many days when it's a challenge. All right, Matt's back again, and Matt's gonna play "Oh, Christmas tree." And our final numbers, the two boys are going to join together, and they are going to play "Jingle Bells."
I always wanted to be a musician, to play a instrument. Good job, guys.
Yeah.
I wish if you played history, you'd become a gentleman.
Okay, that was a nice change of pace. And I was quite impressed, particularly with the elementary school choir. For young kids like that to have such strong voices that are musical.
And to sing a cappella.
Yes. Yeah, very good. Okay, next item, it would be the approval of the agenda.
So, second?
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, yearly reorganization of the board and election of officers. In accordance with the current bylaws of the Shelton Board of Education, 9110 and 9120, all officers of the board shall hold office for a term of one year until their successors are elected and have qualified. The current board of officers were elected on November 18th of 2015, and each voting board member shall cast his or her vote for election of officers. The results of the election shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting, and the minutes shall be available for public inspection at all reasonable times. If such officers are not chosen after one month because of tie vote of the members, a chairperson shall be chosen in conformity with state statutes. The members of the board may select a person to act as moderator for the purpose of the election of officers. They may select by ballot or voice vote from its members, a chairman, vice chairman, and a secretary. At this time, I would call for a motion to select a moderator for the election of officers.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Mark Holden as election for the moderator for the election of officers.
Okay.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Sensing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda would be to conduct the election of officers by ballot or voice vote.
Mr. Chair, I move that we do a ballot, a written ballot.
A written ballot?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I believe as public officials, we cannot cast a secret ballot at any time. So, if we use a ballot, our names must be on the ballot, so it is not a secret and can be duly recorded by the secretary.
On that basis, I would think it would make more sense to just go with a roll call vote, from the standpoint of it would eliminate the need to count the paper ballots.
I'm just making that point. I'm not objecting to a ballot.
Yeah.
But I do know that for the aldermen, all their votes are reported. And we could certainly do a ballot, it would just be the people that have to sign it, so that the secretary could do a record who voted for whom.
Okay, well...
I make a motion to have a voice vote.
Second?
Okay, well, at this point, we have a vote for a voice vote. We have, did you make that as a motion?
I did.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, actually for two alternate routes. I think we need to vote on the ballot option first, okay?
Yeah, because the other one is out of order. The second motion is out of order, because it's already a motion on the floor.
Well, other than it had been seconded, but in any event, I think the proper way to handle it is to go for the first motion. So, any further discussion? Sensing none, all in favor of a written ballot, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Okay, I think we need a division.
Let her do a roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Mrs. Yalish?
Written.
Okay, so that's an aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ritter?
Written, aye.
Mr. Minotti?
No.
Mrs. Koutas?
No.
Mrs. Kill Martin?
No.
Mr. Goncalves?
No.
Mr. Joello?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatos?
No.
Mr. Holden?
No.
Those have it.
Motion fails. Okay, do you want to make it?
Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we elect officers by voice vote. Roll call vote, please.
Second?
Motion is made and seconded for a roll call vote. Any discussion? Sensing none. I think we probably ought to go with a roll call on this one as well.
Okay.
Did you bring enough sticky notes?
All right, Mrs. Yalish, no. Dr. Ritter?
What are you, I don't know what I'm voting on.
This is on a roll call voice vote. The written ballot failed.
Yes.
Aye. You're gonna go along with the...
I'm going to go along with the roll call vote.
Okay. Mr. Minotti?
Is that what you said? I said no.
Mrs. Koutas?
Yes.
Mrs. Kill Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Goncalves?
Yes.
Mr. Joello?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatos?
Yes.
And Mr. Holden?
Yes. Okay. Alrighty, now, at this point, I would accept motions to nominate a chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Mark Holden to continue on as chairman of the Board of Education for the next two years.
Okay, is there a second?
It's a one-year term.
A one-year term.
Well, okay, one-year term.
Second?
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Are there further nominations?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Dave Joello. He has the background in science and physics, which is the initiative that our school system is going in for the School of Innovation and all of the STEM plans that we have in order. And I think, according to Robert's rules, it says for each of us to be charged with examining each person on the board for their background and who could promote our initiatives the best. And so, it is my honor to nominate Dave for this position.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Sensing there are none, we will call the roll.
Okay, Mrs. Yalish?
Chair.
Okay, there are two nominations, so you would vote for either Mark Holden or Dave Joello.
Okay, Dave Joello.
Okay, Dr. Ritter?
Dave Joello.
Tom Minotti?
Mark Holden.
Kate Koutas?
Mark Holden.
Mandy Kill Martin?
Mark Holden.
Mr. Goncalves?
Dave Joello.
David?
David.
Ann Gatos?
Mark Holden.
And Mark Holden.
Mark Holden. Okay. Alrighty, so we have elected me as chairman for the next year. This time, I would open motions to nominate a vice chairman. Are there nominations for a vice chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Tom Minotti to continue as vice chairman of the Board of Education for another year.
Okay, there's a nomination for Tom Minotti for vice chairman, are there any seconds?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Are there further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dave for vice chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded right there. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Sensing none, we will go with a roll call vote.
Okay, Mrs. Yalish?
Uh, Dave.
Mrs., uh, Dr. Ritter?
Dave.
Okay, Mr. Minotti?
Tom Minotti.
Mrs. Koutas?
Tom Minotti.
Mrs. Kill Martin? Um... Um... Tom Minotti. Mr. Goncalves?
Dave.
Mr. Joello?
David.
Mrs. Gatos?
Tom Minotti.
And Mr. Holden.
Tom Minotti.
And that's five.
Okay. Alrighty, so we've elected Tom Minotti as vice chairman. Next, we will open motions, or accept motions to nominate a secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Kate Koutas as secretary.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Since there is only one candidate, I will instruct the secretary to cast one unanimous ballot for Kate for secretary. Okay. Next item on our agenda is committee assignments. At this time, I am prepared to make assignments for three committees. I do anticipate there will be at least one and possibly two additional ones. On finance, Tom Minotti, who will chair. Ann Gatos will vice chair. I am appointing myself as a voting member of the finance committee. Darlissa Ritter, Amanda Kill Martin, David Joello, and Jose Goncalves. Teaching and learning, Ann Gatos, who will chair. Darlissa Ritter will vice chair. Tom Minotti, Kate Koutas, and... Kate Koutas, and Jose Goncalves. Policy. Hold on just a second. Okay, Kate Koutas will chair. Kathy Yolish will vice chair. Amanda Kill Martin and Mark Holden as a voting member. There will be at least one additional committee appointed at a later date. Okay, next off is our public hearing. We allow up to five minutes for each. We allow up to five minutes for each speaker per Board Policy 90 through 25. And as a reminder, no Board of Education employee, student, or community member should be defamed within public comments. Would anybody care to address the board? Yes. And if you would please give your name and your address, Jack.
I'm being fired, I'd like to give out my address.
Oh, okay.
My name is John Jack Finn. I served on the Shelton Board of Aldermen for the past thirty-two years. And I'm the longest-serving alderman in Shelton's history. I'm, I'd like to say, superintendent, board members, and staff. I'm here tonight because there was a comment in the papers, wondering why the cafeteria workers are showing up at your meetings. As a member of the Board of Aldermen for thirty-two years, we had everybody showing up for everything under the sun. Board Education, school buses, planning and zoning, you name it, they were there. We sat there and we listened to them. We listened to them during the public hearing on the budgets for many years. So I'm just here to support the workers behind me. I believe that they're being mistreated and they should be treated more fairly. Thank you.
Okay, would anybody else care to speak?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you, Board of Ed, for letting me speak. My name is Fred Tag. I live at eighteen Geiser Drive in Shelton. I've been in this community for over fifty years. I'm also, just so everybody knows, I'm also the president of my local thirty union for the custodians maintenance for the Board of Ed, but I'm not here speaking on behalf of my union. I'm here as a private citizen. I am here to support the CAF ladies, as I know them since ninety percent of that workers are women. I don't mean any disrespect by calling them CAF ladies. I have been employed by the Board of Ed for over eleven years and I have witnessed firsthand on how hard these ladies work, their consistent professional approach every day to provide over ten thousand meals a week approximately. I believe that figure is probably low. But regardless, a daunting task, to say the least. I have witnessed their interactions with students that has included addressing students by their names. And I'm talking about the high school, at the cash registers. It's unbelievable and heartwarming how these ladies all interact with the students. I've also witnessed a CAF lady that no longer works for us anymore reaching to her own pocket and pay for students that were short. Most of these women have worked here for God knows how many years and new faces are far and few between. They are an important part of our system and also a loyal group to our community. Due to the fact that they came back to work September with no contract with the new food service provider and with only the promise, to my knowledge, from the Board of Ed that at least their wages would stay the same. I know the Board of Ed is not responsible for the specific contract between Witsen and the CAF Ladies Bargaining Union. But I believe the cut in their benefits being a large step backwards, hindsight might have included additional terms of securing their previous benefit packages. I don't know all the specifics due to the fact that I really never have time to talk to any of these ladies because they work so hard during the course of the day. I've seen them all come into their schools and hit the ground running. I never see them hanging around to even go up and approach them to know the exact benefits they are lacking. One such benefit that they are lacking is a legitimate amount of sick time, which history shows most people will show up for work rather than lose a day's pay. To me, I think this is counterintuitive to keeping our schools healthy. Think about it, a sick person handling our students' meals. Not that I think that anyone would deliberately put our children at risk, but people need money. That's why they're working here for us. I hope that some way, somehow, these issues can be resolved. The rest of the system that they all work with, we all enjoy the benefits of enough legitimate sick days to cover us. We have paid holidays. I mean, they have lost so much on this new deal with Witsen. I think it is very unfair and I think it is a terrible step backwards. I mean, we're about progress, you know. Everything we do in school is to be progressive in our actions and I think this has been, we digress, I guess is the right, regress, I don't know the proper word, but, you know, I see the sign over here, unity. I mean, we're all in the same boat. We're all in the school system. And I think it's terribly unfair what these ladies have been dropped to. And I, what is gonna be next? Are we gonna start dropping our special ed coverage, which I think is phenomenal in the system and I would hate to see that? But where's this gonna stop? And we're picking on a small group that does an unbelievable daunting task every day. I just think it's totally unfair. I know, hopefully, that somehow, some way, through the Board of Ed, through the city of Shelton, the Board of Aldermen, you know, the monies, I think something should be done diplomatically, you know. Very, it's very disheartening to see, you know, people that have worked for us for years to be pushed backwards. I mean, it's just counterintuitive to everything we stand for in the school system. We do such great progress and such work for our students and to treat a group of people like this, I just think is totally unfair and not American. I just, I just can't believe this is happening. But like I said, I know you're not directly responsible for their contract, but, and I know in hindsight, if you guys knew that this was gonna happen to them, I would, I firmly believe you would have probably tried to get more specifications in the dealings you have with Witsen. That's all I have to say and I hope everything works out well for these ladies. They deserve it. They're very hardworking and I think they're great. Great for our system.
They are terrific people.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else care to address the board? Okay. And again, a reminder, if you would please state your name and your address.
My name is Carrie Reynolds. I live at fourteen Glendale Terrace in Shelton. I'm a parent of a Shelton student. He is fourteen. The lunch program is very important to him, of course, and he knows a lot of the lunch ladies throughout his schooling in Shelton. And I just wanted to tell you that we, my family and I, we all support the cafeteria workers in Shelton.
Would anybody else care to address the board?
My name is Denise Scollan. I live at thirty-four Westminster Avenue.
Excuse me, would you repeat your name? I didn't hear it.
Denise Scollan.
Thank you, Denise.
I've been with the lunch program for nineteen years. My kids have gone through the system. We work long and hard to get what we have. I was sick this year. I ended up with bronchial pneumonia. You know, because I came to work and I kept fighting back, trying to take, you know, stuff to make me better and ended up having to take two weeks off of work. Five days doesn't go anywhere. I lost two weeks' worth of work, money, plus the holidays. We can't afford it. We've worked really hard to get where we're getting. And it's just a shame, you know, that Witsen's is not allowing us what we had. And we're just looking for support to try and get this all back to us. And I don't think it's a hard thing to ask. And, you know, I've got all these people here with the same thing. They're fighting to keep what we have. And we don't want to lose it. Is that all I got to say?
Right. Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Yes.
Hi there. My name is Dave Farrar. I'm a junior at Shelton High School. This isn't directly rated to the previous speakers who had come up. And I'm not sure if I can ask questions and have a response during this session. So I'll state rhetorically. There's a rumor going around that has made its way to me. Regarding advanced placement course admissions at Shelton High School and the removal of minimum requirements for admissions such as teacher recommendation, class ranks, grade, et cetera. I would like to know, and even though I cannot be answered today, I'd like to know whether this has been discussed and if so, whether this has been made final. Because I think there are a lot of questions to be answered regarding this decision. I don't think this is a very cut and clean decision. I think that you have to ask yourself, how can you ensure that class sizes are kept to a minimum so as to not diminish the learning experience and educational value? And lastly, how do you plan to accommodate the students that are on AP level for their courses and the students that are not on an AP level in the same class trying to learn the same material at the same pace? And this may be a decision that was not even valid anymore and the rumor could be invalid. I'm not sure. Obviously, since I cannot ask a question, I can't get a response on that, but if this is a decision that is being made, I hope my questions do get answered and in consideration when decisions.
Okay, our superintendent has indicated he would be happy to meet with students. This is not the proper forum, but we're interested. Would anybody else care to speak? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none, we will move on. Let's see. Actually, approval of minutes. This week, I'm not trying to rush through too much. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes for our meeting of November fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Presentation and recognition.
Music is done.
Yes, we have the music performance already, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule. And actually, Chris, if you could go on with presentations and recognition.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sunnyside Elementary School is a great place for students to learn and grow. And that's because of the great teachers and the great principal and all of the people that are part of that team. They have recently been recognized by the Connecticut Association of Schools as a place that is designated as a positive school with their, because of their climate practices. And I'd like to ask the principal, Amy Yost, to step forward to the microphone and any other members of her team to discuss with us what it is that this award represents. This is a very special thing for Shelton. Yeah, you can pull those seats right up.
So on behalf of Sunnyside School, it's a great honor that we accept this award. Behind me, as you see the faces here, is a phenomenal staff that I was graciously granted to work with over the past four years. So for me, this is really coming full circle. I've been at Sunnyside four years. I remember December fourth is when I got the call and I think it was December fifth meeting that I was able to, got signed on to Sunnyside School. So it's just a great way. Four years have flown by. And we are so proud of the accomplishments of our school. This award recognizes not only a cultural, the culture of the building and the climate of the building, but it also recognizes what we've done academically. So there's a whole rubric that CAS came out. We did a self-assessment, our PBIS team did a self-assessment. And then CAS comes out with the team. They meet with students, they met with parents, they met with myself, they interviewed for about two and a half hours. We had a student tour throughout the building, which I was not part of. Mrs. Lucier walked the students around, but it was all student-led, to the point of where they brought them into the teacher's lounge to show them the bathroom. They showed them every ounce of our school and with such pride, showing the work that's on the board, what the progress boards in the classroom look like, what they were for, really delving in also against, not just to the positive behaviors of our PBIS program we have going on and recognizing that tiger pride that we always talk about, but really looking at the academics and how does the culture of a building positively affect the student growth academically in a building. So with this wonderful staff behind me, their dedication, their hard work, we are, we've just really improved and our students are the main benefit right now. I'm just so proud to work with such a talented group of teachers, educators, really. So the award is, when we were handed the award, we all passed around to touch it because it really is all of their efforts and their hands on the kids that we were able to get to this level. So I'm very proud of the staff, our parents, too. There's a community piece in it. So looking at the whole rubric, it's, there's many facets in it. So again, just so proud of our school to be able to be recognized for that, all the hard work that's been going on in the past four years. So congratulations.
Well, we are certainly very proud of all of you and we really appreciate what you do for the students.
I would like to speak on behalf of the staff. I think we can all agree that without Amy's leadership, our school has taken a great turn. And without her leadership and dedication and, as I said, I've never worked so hard in my life. But she's done a great job and she's pushed us to be the best that we can be. So, thank you.
I was fortunate to be one of the people who was interviewed as part of the process and frankly, I walked out of the interview thinking they wrote these questions, thinking about Sunnyside School. You know, I just, I walked out feeling really confident that you guys were gonna end up getting recognized. It's a wonderful thing. All of our schools in Shelton work hard on the climate issue. And it's nice to see Sunnyside get recognized. Thank you. Okay. Okay, let's see, communications to the board. I don't believe we have any.
Just a one about this.
Yeah. Okay, superintendent's report and action items.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I want to give an update on the strategic planning work that we are doing as a district. The core committee met very recently and we are talking about working on the milestones that are being piloted this year. Those milestones are ways to help students see where they, at what point in their school career they are assessed and measured for their ability to master certain skills and dispositions. We are looking at adding coding next year as a pilot, coding for students so that one of the things we believe that students that graduate from Shelton schools ought to master is the ability to code. And coding is not as mysterious as it might sound. It is a way of thinking that is going to benefit our students. We have many talented teachers that are already doing it and we are now making it into a a district-wide set of experiences that students will have. We think that this will serve them well. We note that the students that entered our kindergarten classes this year in September will graduate high school in the year 2030. And we think that those children will be well-served by the ability to master different kinds of coding. With that said, we're also going to be looking at a Shelton vision of the graduate. We're going to be working with the board, with the committee, at faculty meetings. We're gonna have some public events where we talk about and solicit input on what exactly is our vision of a graduate in 2030, in 2031, next year. So that's something that's gonna be very exciting for all of us. And then we're gonna be having, as I noted, some public events. In January, I just wanted to alert the board, in January, I'll be giving a report and a small presentation on the balances and imbalances of our enrollment in different schools so we can talk about that. We can talk about what the implications are for that as we move forward. So I thank you for allowing us to invite the children to perform tonight. Obviously, it was very meaningful. Obviously, it was very meaningful for them and their families and they had a lot of fun. And I look forward to catching up with this young gentleman to address some of his concerns and have a dialogue. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approved field trips for our information only. And board action items. Okay, items presented for a vote. Consideration of the board to approve the request of Perry Hill School Color Guard to fundraise using a GoFundMe campaign to purchase new poles and flags.
I move that we accept their GoFundMe. Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I presume they went through the route that we prescribed when we wrote the policy.
Yes, they did.
Wouldn't have been on our agenda if they had.
That's what I figured. After the time we spent on that policy, I just had to ask.
Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve the request of the Shelton High School Wrestling Booster Club to conduct fundraising activities during the 2017-18 season. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to ask a question. I see where part of their fundraising is a 50-50 raffle. Do they have to go through any state requirements to hold a raffle? Is there any kind of violation or, I remember somebody brought that up in the past.
The law's been changed.
The law has been changed, thank you.
So they will need to comply with the law and we'll make sure they're aware of that.
But Mrs. Yolish brings up a good point. When we are, there is some consideration in the future, which would come before the board for your consideration in advance, but to have some raffles that would raffle vacations to Disney or possibly even a car, in those cases, then it would require, as you suggest, a letter to the-
But a general 50-50 is fine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to approve the request of Sunnyside School to conduct fundraising activities as outlined in the letter during the 2017-18 school year.
Move, so move.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion. Have, there's no trip form. We always get a trip form when our students are going somewhere.
Is this in the motion?
I thought he had a trip coming up.
This is-
This is a fundraising request.
Sorry, I rescind, sorry, sorry.
All right, good.
Sorry. Yes, he was seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I see you, because of the word, to stand-
Comments by the board chair. I've got a few things tonight. First off, I'm going to actually ask everybody a question, so I'll let you know what it is and then I'll say a few more things while you think about it and then we'll get around to the question. And the question is, I'd like everybody to tell us something that you would like to see accomplished by the board or by yourself in the next year. Okay? So, while you're thinking about that, for the benefit of the public, we did approve the contract with the Administrators Union earlier this evening and so that's a good thing. I'm going to be sending out a questionnaire to all board members within the next few days and I'm going to be asking some questions like, what kind of pizza do you like? What's the best way to get in touch with you, what hours are best? You know, for example, I'm a night owl, so it's fine to call me up until midnight, but I know some of you are not quite that late.
You're on Facebook Messenger till two or three in the morning.
So in any event, just things that try to help make things a little bit smoother in terms of getting in touch with each other. The other thing is, we really need to start thinking about when we're going to have our next board training or retreat. We have several new members on the board. I'm not sure when the last time was that we had three new members come on in such a short period of time. And so it makes sense to have a few hours where we can go over some things like general, the alphabet soup of acronyms and what they all mean, what the different titles mean in terms of funding, things of that nature, and also go over some of the basics for things like expulsion hearings. So I'll be looking to find out, for example, is a Saturday morning okay for you or would you prefer to keep it on a weeknight? Are there any nights of the week that are better or worse for you than others? Presumably, the fourth Wednesday of the month is a pretty good one because that's when we meet. But in any event, so you'll be getting that survey. At this point, I'd like to start with asking people to mention one goal for themselves or for the board that we have, and we're going to start with Mandy over on that side.
Your kid always gets picked on. So I actually have two. One would be, I'd like to see an improvement in the communication between us as a board and our community at large, as well as a greater engagement with our community. And the second thing is, I'd like to really take an in-depth look at our disciplinary processes, resources, and standards of accountability.
Okay. Jose?
Good evening. I also have two. I would like for the, if they could see, to get around paving the parking lot at Shelton High School. As I've gone to other high schools in the state, you know, I see nice paving, the lines outlined. When you go to an event at Shelton High School, you don't even know where to park. That's one issue I'd like to see done. And also, if we rescind the parking fee for the high school students. I think it's unfair for the high school students to pay that fee because, you know, high schools and schools are paid with state funding and it's just unfair that the teachers could park for free, but the students have to pay.
Yeah, I like this two thing. I'll give two specific things. The first one is that the Board of Education sets specific measurable goals for the education program every year, that we can measure whether or not we're accomplishing what we think we're doing and these will be measurable. And the second thing is that we would do the same thing for the superintendent, that he have firm measurable goals that we set in conjunction with him and we can determine whether or not he has met or exceeded those goals.
Kate?
I would like to continue to see the music program expanding and to continue to rebuild our high school band size, as well as eighth grade involvement in the high school band like it used to be and the whole range of musical electives that the kids need when they move on to a career in music beefed up. And my other is kind of a springboard off of something Mandy said with the community involvement. I started coming to Board of Ed meetings as a PTA representative and I'd like to see us again with representatives from each school here to hear what's going on at the Board of Ed and getting the parents more aware. Not, I know there's an active group that meets with Dr. Colette, but I'd like to see them here too. Arlene would be proud of me. I'm sorry. No, I just said, Arlene would be proud of me.
Yeah, quite a few things, but first of all, the music program, as Kate said, I had the opportunity today to go to Long Hill School to see the fourth grade choir, chorus, Christmas concert. And it was stupendous. And if the students, nine years old, can sing three different types of Christmas music, Hanukkah, Shalom, and correct me, and conventional Christmas songs, it was unbelievable. And if they can do this at the fourth grade, imagine what they could do at the high school. So again, I'd like to see the music program expand to what it was when our children were in the band. That's number one. Number two, again, what Mandy said, and I think this has been on our plate for a while, is more communication with the community. Why don't we have a full house here tonight just to hear what's going on with the Board of Ed and the different types of programs? And I forgot the third one. Well, I'll pass on this for now, that's it.
I can come back to you if you're ready.
Okay. Well, and you can also mention things during highlights. Part of this is, I think it's a good idea for us to be thinking about goals for the future. I'm focusing on improving our student achievement. We're doing very well, but we could be doing better. And I think that part of that is the school of innovation that we're working on and I know that our strategic planning committee is working for ways to improve that, so I think that's a goal that is going to happen. I'm also very pleased with what we've seen with the music program tonight and I hope that we continue to expand our emphasis on music and the arts because, you know, we talked a while back about it's time to convert from STEM to STEAM and I think we're making steps in that direction, but we have more to go. Darlissa?
Okay. One thing that I'm really interested in is raising our math scores. That is a real bothersome thing for me. And the second thing is getting our financial house in order. So we have one for students and teachers and one for the board.
Okay.
Um, I also am certainly on board with expanding our communications. I think we're doing a really good job so far and I want to continue that between the community and our board. And I also want to, you know, as serving on the Strategic Plan Committee, I'd like to, you know, make sure that our milestones for each grade level are communicated and my creative contribution hopefully will help illustrate that to, again, communicate to the community and illustrate how we're going to accomplish these milestones and what will be accomplished at each milestone.
Kathy?
Yes, I was going to also say the music program. I think at one time we had a very strong music program in the high school and it really somehow just precipitated and it's like, I think we're working hard now to try to get it, but we really need to bring it up to its full capacity because when you go to the elementary schools, like you said, the Long Hill School, always beautiful concerts as do many of the other elementary schools, and then the Perry Hill and the intermediate school and then it kind of fizzles. So I would say the music program and I would like to have more inclusive communication within the board.
All righty. Okay, well, that gives us some things to think about. And I will mention that one of the issues that we have had with the music program, particularly the high school, is that we have a number of high school students who are really interested in music who choose to go to a program like RCA and so all of their arts classes have to happen at the other school, so that's a drain of talent from us. So that's something that we're going to have to work to overcome.
We've got to make them want to stay.
Yeah, exactly. We need to make them, you know, feel that Shelton High School is the best place for all of their education on the high school level. And then, okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Teaching and learning did meet Tuesday, yesterday, at four o'clock. What we did was just talk about the agenda for teaching and learning for next year. First of all, we had a brief overview of the current status of Strategic Planning Committee by Dr. Colette. You heard most of it in his report tonight, so I won't go into further information on that. And our second idea was a discussion and overview of the Board of Education teaching and learning calendar for 2018. Here we were talking about a new course approval timeline. We were talking about district program information or presentation updates and this will be done by our directors to keep us up to date as to what is going on in terms of curriculum. We're going to be talking about model classroom presentation, Project XL, the EL programming within the district, School of Innovation, state-level Innovation Committee meeting that will be held here in Shelton, in the Shelton Public Schools, and also with respect to the five-six tag program and not last but least, changes in the K-12 music program. The superintendent also reported at a state budget meeting regarding ongoing forecast for additional cuts to state education funding, what will happen next, what will be our next steps within the district, talking about finance. We will be keeping an eye on these topics and gauge the impact on Shelton. Our next meeting is tentatively set for January 10th, which is a Wednesday rather than a Tuesday at 4:00 PM. Some tentative items on our agenda will be new course proposals, both at the high school and SIS, I believe, and a tentative calendar of all teacher teaching and learning presentations for the remainder of the school year. I believe it is online. There is a tentative presentation calendar for all Board of Education teaching and learning assignments. So for instance, in February, we're talking about a model classroom. So that if you go online, those of you that were at the meeting, heard the presentation, but we do have a tentative schedule online that you can all look at. That is the end of our meeting agenda.
Thank you. Finance committee. Put on your other hat.
Your new hat.
We had a very good finance meeting tonight. Our meeting basically entertained a lot of discussion from our members, ranging from looking at our L2 narratives, our check registers, questioning some of the expenditures and so forth. Other than that, and I apologize with everything going on, I can't say anything else about the meeting. If anyone else that was present would like to say something, please do.
Okay, all right. Policy committee, Kate?
Policy, we also met yesterday following teaching and learning. We had several things on the agenda. We talked about in future months, taking a policy family a month and reviewing it, especially with new board members, so people can be aware of what's in there. New board members who weren't there, Jose, oh, he stepped out. There is a policy book available downstairs for you to pick up. It's also available online. We had a brief update on the National Federation of High School Sports School Broadcast Program. One camera has been purchased by the Connecticut Association of Schools. The other camera is being purchased by the family who is making the donation. Trees have been cut down to access the wires that need to travel from the stadium to the school and the signed contract is being reviewed by our attorney. We also had a, at the previous meeting, the November, October, whatever our last policy meeting was, we had had an informal discussion of board members and social media and in the meantime, something has come down from CAE with suggestions for policy. So we took the background information with us and many pages of suggested policy matters, so we have a signed reading for next month and we will begin to discuss the new policy on social media involvement, which will be a part of the bylaws of the board. And then we also had an involved informative discussion on bullying and again, that's more required reading for next month because it's like 25 pages worth, because there were concerns from board members who had sat on a recent expulsion hearing of how things are documented and carried through and all that. So we're going to be moving the whole bullying issue forward for further study so we're aware of what's going on, how it's done and make sure all our ducks are in a row. And we also will meet on Wednesday, the 10th, due to conflicts and people's schedules on Tuesday, the 9th. Otherwise, we're going to stick to the second Tuesday.
At 5:00 PM, Kate?
5:00 PM.
And CES?
Oh, right. CES did not have a formal meeting this Thursday, last Thursday, basically because we are in the process of doing a search program for the new CES director. There was a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, and then an explanation by Mr. Jim Ritchie, who is part of the research committee, to tell us what the next process is going to be. Other than that, that was- Other than that, that was the extent of the meeting this week.
Okay. We're not doing a CAE report this month, because I haven't appointed anyone yet, and our last one is no longer on the board. I will be appointing a CAE liaison. If anybody is interested in the job, please let me know. So, okay. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. For your information, we have the vacancy report, which is attached, the staff and stipend actions, which are attached in the enrollment report. Yes?
Excuse me, and, and just a question on the, for your information. All right, I see on the staff, and the staff vacancies here, we filled a, it says a new position, mathematics specialist at Shelton High School, a new position. Where did we, where did we find the money for the new position? And the second thing is, you know, if it's a new position, I thought-
I think we discussed it the other day. It was grant?
It, it's grant money. That's been allocated to provide math services. That's been a, a concern of the high school.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, it was discussed, what, at teaching and-
At one of the, yeah, one of the meetings this week. I can't remember which one. Same question was asked. I don't know if it was-
Kathy was stranded in London.
Yes.
But it fits in, it's under the umbrella of improving math scores in the district, and we're trying to give the kids a bit of support that we can.
Okay, no, the only reason why I questioned is because I see it's a new position.
Makes sense. You're not the first to question.
And, okay, and also, you know, I'm thinking about Mohegan School with 26 kids and that, two, two, what is it, second grade? 26 kids in each grade, and we don't, I know we hired a tutor to help in there, but I know, from teaching second grade, I know how difficult it can be with 26 in the class. So, that's just why I questioned it. Thank you.
Yep, okay. All righty. Next item is my second favorite item on the agenda, highlights. And one of the things actually I'll mention before we get into highlights is actually we have a couple of Boy Scouts from Troop 101 who are sitting in on today's meeting, because they're supposed to attend a government meeting as one of their requirements. If you guys could just stand so we can recognize you. So.
Interesting meeting to come to.
Yes, you picked an interesting one to come to, and hopefully you'll have learned something from it. Okay, would anybody care to say something under highlights?
I would, I would. I was there first. We were both there together last night.
Okay.
Okay, you say the first school, I'll say the second.
Oh, I, Mohegan was the-
Sunnyside.
Oh, okay, I missed that one, so I'll tell you about me. Mohegan had their Polar Express Literacy Night on Monday night, and it was mobbed with kids in pajamas. And they had three stations, one in the cafeteria, a Jeopardy game in the library, and-
No.
No, it was vocabulary in the library, and more Jeopardy in the classrooms.
Right.
So, but it was mobbed, and the schedule was made, so nobody was going to the same place at the same time. It was great, it was really great. Lot, lot of people there.
Sunnyside was their literacy night, and the activities were focused on using the technology. There were 35 to 38 Chromebooks used in the cafeteria. They each took a vocabulary word. They did a little PowerPoint presentation of the meaning and the illustration, the antonym, and then they did an acrostic. So that was very good. I got to read many of them.
I think I had comments to say.
Anne was there with her daughter, reading hers.
They all did a great job. It was really fun.
Okay, anybody else under highlights?
I have one for, I had the honor of, pleasure of attending the Cap's Dinner last Thursday along with Kate and Tom. Two of us went, and it was a great night. It was really nice. Two high school students and two middle school students were honored for their outstanding everything.
I think there was a really cool anecdote, was the two middle school students both had been friends since first grade-
Yes.
And were, were vying, well, it's okay if you win it, it's okay, it's okay. We could both win it. They did both win it.
Yeah, that was really neat.
So it was really cool. And, and one of them is the daughter of one of our teachers, Mrs. D'Amico.
And to add to that, the high school, one of the high school boys was my former first grade student.
Oh, Kathy, in competition now.
All of mine, all of mine are already graduated.
Mine are still coming.
So yours is still coming. Mine have graduated.
All righty. Anybody else under highlights?
You have robotics something, I'm sure.
Oh, yes. I go last. Anybody else under highlights? Okay, then I'll go with the ones I have. It was a busy month, and there are a few things that really stood out for me. The students at Shelton Intermediate School responded to the devastating hurricane in Puerto Rico by holding a food drive. And on November 20th, the Spanish Club of SIS hosted the honorable Pedro Garcia Figueroa, mayor of Hormigueros, Puerto Rico, and he was there to accept the food, but he also talked about the kinds of decisions he had to make to help his community recover quickly from the hurricane. He was a very engaging guy, and I thought it was really terrific that the kids got a chance to meet with him and hear him speak. We had some great football games. Unfortunately, we didn't win the last game we played, which is never a good thing.
But how great is it that Ansonia went down?
Yeah. All five of our FLL Lego League robotics teams qualified for the state championship, and for the second year in a row, systematic won, and will represent us at the world championship in Detroit in late April.
Poor baby over there.
I think it was the other SIS team that came in fourth, and they are qualified for invitationals, so they're probably gonna get to play again someplace else. I mentioned at our last meeting, when I showed up at the second competition, I discovered we have on 15, the Leopards, and there are four fourth graders who have siblings who are higher up in grade, and they are amazing. They are incredibly friendly and aggressive friendly, okay? And they are enthused, and there's just no way you can talk to these kids without walking away saying, wow! It was terrific. They got recognized as well, so, I mean, we own FLL in Shelton. You know, it's just amazing what we're doing.
Ms. Pickle, which team are you with?
I, which is the systematic and the resistance.
Yeah, yeah. And then the high school robotics season is going to be kicking off on the morning of January 6th. I'm not sure if they're going to be in the former gymnasium here, or if they'll be at the high school, but there is a webcast where Dean Kamen, who was the guy who invented the Segway, and some other people, will unveil this year's game, and they'll talk a little bit about what the game looks like, and they'll have the animation and so forth. And at the end of the presentation on the webcast, they can download a manual that when they print it out, it's gonna be about that thick, that has all of the rules for the game. And then they'll break out into five or six different groups to brainstorm, to think about what their robot needs to look like this year to play that game, and what their strategy needs to be in order to win on the Einstein Field for the world championship in April. It's an amazing program. As you might guess, I'm a huge fan of it. I encourage people to stop by and see what these kids are doing. And the other thing is, one of the huge reasons our program is so successful is we have so many engineers within the community who volunteer their time. Some of them do get small stipends, but frankly, they tend to donate it back to the program as part of the great gift, so that it's doubled. But, and they put a lot of time into working with these kids. And another cool thing is, the kids from the high school level go back to the FLL level to help them out, and two of our high school students this year got recognized for their mentoring work, one at the state championship and one at the New Haven game. So that was terrific. Otherwise, I guess we're time for, or it's time for my favorite part of the program, which is adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.